Good evening. Tonight is Monday, February 26th. It's 7:03 PM and this is the St. Louis Park School Board meeting. We just came out of a 6:00 PM update meeting with Tom Marble about radio KDXL with licensing. So we've got our call to order. We'll have the approval of the agenda. We'll have open forum. Open forum is an opportunity for the community to address the school board. This is a time when we will listen to what you have to say. You are allotted three minutes. There has been some discussion for a little bit of special exceptions because we've got some students with us. So Cindy Bennett, our executive assistant, sits on the end. She'll have a timer to help guide you. We do want to make sure that we do not have any comments of a personal nature directed at an individual by name or inference because of privacy data law. So I'm confident that everyone will be able to respect that. Number four on the agenda is our superintendent's report. Discussion items: the primary years, middle years, and diploma program for the International Baccalaureate. The high school baseball team is traveling to Arizona for spring break. Andy Ewald will present that. Policy Development: First reading for policies 101, Legal Status of the School Board; 108, District Goals; 413, Harassment and Violence; and a new mandated policy 415, Reporting of Maltreatment of Vulnerable Adults. Next on the list is Policy Development Second Reading, 410, Family Medical Leave; and 522, Student Sex Nondiscrimination. Then we'll have the Budget Assumptions for Fiscal Year 2018 by Superintendent Osai. We have a consent agenda. We have an action agenda, including the approval of policy second readings, 410, Family Medical Leave; and 522, Student Sex Nondiscrimination. We'll have the approval of the high school baseball spring break trip and the approval of the fiscal '18 budget assumptions. We will have communications and transmittals. And then adjournment: Is there a motion to approve this agenda?
Moved.
Moved by Jim Benneke. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ken Morrison. Any discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries 7-0. So now we'll move into open forum. The first group that we're going to hear from is for the Gender Inclusion Policy. Susan Neese, do you want to go first?
Do I need to state my address or...
I'm leaving the address.
Okay, Susan Neese, 2800 Alabama Avenue South. And I don't have a specific statement. I'm just here to say that the community is following this process, the community is waiting, and we anticipate that the gender inclusion policy will be passed at some point. We realize that it is in process, and I'm just here to support and to listen and just to remind everyone that we're all still paying attention and we want to just kind of keep the pressure on. And thank you for all of the work that everyone is doing on this policy. And we look forward to and expect a positive outcome and that we will be very soon celebrating a victory for the rights of not only transgender students, gender nonconforming students, and all students in St. Louis Park Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Zaylor Stout.
Good evening. My name is Zaylor Stout. My address is 4942 North Sixth Street. Former resident of St. Louis Park, former city council candidate, former member of the Human Rights Commission. I use he/him/his pronouns, and I'm here to advocate on behalf of the gender inclusion policy and/or the toolkit. Surprisingly enough, it's been 308 days since we were last here presenting in front of the school board as it relates to this issue. And there were members of our community at the time that were surprised that the policy had not already been passed. They kind of just assumed that St. Louis Park would be a city that would have a policy in place to protect transgender and gender nonconforming students. Yet 308 days later, nothing's happened yet. So let me go over some of the highlights in regards to what's changed in the life of transgender Americans since we were last here. The Trump administration has tried to ban transgender individuals from openly serving in the military. The Trump administration has rescinded the non-binding Obama-era guidance that told K-12 schools that receive federal funding that transgender students are protected under federal law. The Trump Justice Department has rescinded another Obama-era memo that provided protection for transgender workers and said that that was a violation of their civil rights. The Justice Department similarly took anti-LGBT steps in regards to the North Carolina anti-transgender bathroom bill and one other discrimination case against transgender individuals in healthcare. We have the Trump administration failing to recognize Pride Month, which is during the month of June. We also have the Trump administration instructing the CDC not to use the word transgender in any of their documents and research moving forward. We also have the LGBT community being excluded from the 2020 census. So what we also have is silence from this body in regards to the students here, in regards to whether they are seen as visible and important parts of our community. I ran for city council. One of my three main prospects that I was... Policies that I was advocating was the gender inclusion policy. And I met with all different kinds of folks, and most folks were surprised that we didn't already have a policy in place in regards to this. And folks that you would have expected to fight against it were all for it. You know, your mission indicates that there should be protection for all students. All students include transgender and gender nonconforming students. The Allies of St. Louis Park made this an important issue in regards to the election of city council... Of school board members as well. And we had, you know, town forums and we talked about this and made it an important aspect in regards to the emergency and the immediacy about this issue. We don't want to end up having to come back here after some type of crisis or incident happened and saying, "Why didn't we do anything to protect our kids?" Thank you.
Thank you so much. Kim Bartels.
Good evening. My name is Kim Bartels. I am a resident of St. Louis Park at 4305 West 38th Street, and I'm here to speak in support of the gender inclusion policy. I am the proud parent of Elise and Claire, who are a high school graduate and a ninth grader respectively. Now in her first year of college, Elise could not be here tonight. However, as her mother, I stand before you to urge this school board to pass the gender inclusion policy. During three of her four years at SLP High School, our daughter Elise was the leader of the GSA, the Gender and Sexuality Alliance. During her graduation, Elise worked tirelessly with other students and community members, including Zaylor Stout, Susan Neese, Amy Gildenmeister, and others, to urge this school board to pass the gender inclusion policy. Elise has been advocating for human rights since 2011, when she signed up and recruited both of her parents to call for the Vote No campaign regarding revising the Minnesota State Constitution's definition of marriage. Elise was 12 and 1/2, and she was thrilled to have had a role in defeating the Minnesota Marriage Amendment. When Elise approached us after the election in November 2016, we worried deeply about her friends, especially her transgender friends and gender nonconforming students in the district. We, as parents, were uncertain how to comfort her or what to do. We knew, however, that it would not work to pretend that there was no reason for Elise to fear for their safety and well-being. At first, I struggled to better understand what Elise's transgender friends and GSA members were experiencing, but drawing on my PhD in psychology, it helped me to think about the importance of one's identity development to their overall psychological and physical well-being. One of the most important tasks in developing as children into adults is to become more fully ourselves, to grow in our sense of self. And one's gender identity is a crucial aspect of our overall identity development. I know that it is one thing to feel like you can't fully be yourself at work, but this pales in comparison to what it is like for children to have people close to them deny their very identity, of which their gender identity is an essential part. I trust that after having listened to students and adults in this community, this school board will do what it takes to work out the details and then pass the gender inclusion policy to support and protect our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Erickson.
Thank you. My name is Susan Erickson, and I live at 4122 Salem Avenue in St. Louis Park. Thank you for this opportunity to speak before you today. I would also like to deeply thank you for stepping up and agreeing to serve our community and its citizens, both current and future. You have thrown yourselves into the fray at a challenging and embattled period of time. You have put yourselves in the line of fire, and for that, I thank each and every one of you. Now, the fact that I'm using so many battle metaphors is not lost on me. The shocking reality of the matter is that an increasing number of our friends, neighbors, and children are experiencing another kind of battle, which amazingly is not a metaphor. I am here today to talk about gun violence prevention and urge you... No, actually, to demand that you use every aspect of your intelligence, your compassion, and power to prevent the slaughter of our children and our communities. I am advocating a call to arms. Not weapons, but arms that embrace a loved one, hold a child, carry a load, build a shelter, reach for a book, and open a door. We are not powerless victims in these current events. We, as citizens, and you, as elected representatives, can make innumerable decisions which will help ease the factors prompting gun violence. We can change the trajectory of gun violence. Listen to your citizens, read the data, consult with the experts, but most of all, look at these children and screw your courage to the sticking place and act. Minnesota has one of the lowest ratios of counselors to students in the country. Demand that promised funding and hiring actually happens, then demand more. Our counselors, social workers, and nurses are the first line of not defense, but recognition, compassion, and care for children who may be falling through the cracks and sinking into desperation. Continue the anti-bullying programs, the equity programs, the food support programs. Engage every parent, community member, expert, or mental health organization you can to help you. We have myriad untapped resources and people who are dying to help stop people from, well, dying. I hereby pledge to you and everyone here that I will do my part and stand shoulder-to-shoulder with you. Now, on March 14th, at 10 o'clock AM, students throughout the country will stand up and demand that you and we say enough. For 17 minutes, one for each child killed, our students, who we have taught year after year to be upstanders and practice the IB code, will do just that. Please support them with your words and your actions. They are in the line of fire. They are our future. We cannot run away from this battle. Open your arms and let us join together and fight the good fight, because we can't afford not to. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. The next group is going to be with the Roots and Shoots students. So is there a particular order you want to go, Larry? Okay. Just to clarify for the record, I spoke to the students out in the hall. We do ask the adults to provide their name and address, but because of data privacy and this is being broadcast, we are not asking the students to provide their address on camera. Just their name is sufficient. If you want to share your school or grade, that's fine, but not necessary.
Hello. My name is Katie Christensen, and I'm a junior here at St. Louis Park High School. I'm also a member of the Environmental Club here called Roots and Shoots, and I am an Environment and Sustainability Commission member. On February 5th, St. Louis Park City Council unanimously passed a climate action plan, committing the city to being carbon-neutral by 2040. This aggressive plan began over two years ago with students in Roots and Shoots. We're here representing them. And to follow up on Jane Stevenson's valedictorian address, we are asking the school district to lead our city in moving towards the goals laid out in the climate action plan by committing to becoming 100% powered by renewable energy by the year 2025. And seeing as many of us high school students won't be around to see the district reach that goal, here with us today, we have some students from the class of 2025 who are going to speak on the issue.
All right. Thanks, Larry.
My name is Sarah. I'm in fifth grade and I attend Peter Holbert Elementary School. I am also in the class of 2025, and I think that global warming is an issue that has gone overlooked for far too long, and if we don't do something soon, I think there will be negative consequences that no one will like.
Hello. My name is Micah. I'm in fifth grade and I'm in the class of 2025. I really do not like global warming, and it really makes me sad to see animals and other things getting hurt because of us. And we're trying to stop pollution, so that's why we've made a group. And we want this to go out to many other people so that they can get the word, so we can help out with pollution and solar energy and stuff. Thank you.
My name is Taylor. I am in fifth grade. I go to Peter Holbert School, and I'm in the class of 2025. I am hoping that as we grow up, there will be more and more people that are aware of what is happening to our earth and aware of what we are doing to it. I'm also hoping that there will be more people that are actually taking action to prevent it.
Hi, I'm Marley. I go to Aquila Elementary School, and I'm in fifth grade. I think that we should stop pollution and global warming because it is hurting animals, climates, and others. It is also very dangerous for our climate because it is... It's making oceans and everything. It is making oceans dirty. There's more than 100 types of plastic that floats around in the ocean, and I don't think that's a good climate for our ocean because, yeah.
Hi, I'm Jason Kraft, Peter Holbert, and I'm here because I care about climate change.
Students, if you don't touch the mic and just try and lean into it, it'll pick you up, okay? So take your hand off of it, otherwise all the audience is going to hear your feedback. So we can hear you, so just take your hand off, okay?
I don't want the polar ice caps to melt so that polar bears don't go extinct and so coastal cities don't get flooded. Also, I don't want Earth to be like Venus, and I'd like our schools to do this so schools and other cities will follow us. Also, Kayden, he couldn't make it, and he says he felt... He feels like we should move to solar energy because of global warming and all the contamination associated with it. He also thought that our city should be a community that steps up to try and move our community to a better place for generations to come.
My name is Arun, and I want to do this so that we are actually doing something and not just talking about it and then forgetting. Also, if we do this, it will inspire other cities to go green, so maybe one day the whole country will be doing this. Thomas couldn't make it either. He says that he is a fifth grader at Susan Lindgren. He cares about climate change because he does not want sea levels to rise and kill everyone. He wants the earth to be safe for everyone.
Thank you very much, class of 2025. We appreciate hearing from you. Anna Casper.
Hello. My name is Anna Casper, and I am a junior at St. Louis Park High School. Okay, so one part of the climate action plan was to talk about renewable energy and converting the city to renewable energy. And we would also like the school district to be a leader in that, as you know. So before we get to talking about like the fancy, like cool, like forms of energy, like solar and wind, I want to talk about improving our current systems right now before we get started on that. So one... A couple of really important points to consider is that in schools, lighting accounts for nearly 50% of energy use. Now, this is my turn, but I think it's totally cool. Okay. All right. Because if we use LED lighting, we can like save so much money, and we can just like... It'll just like... And we can save so much money, and we can reduce our energy use by like almost 50%, that's like insane. And another thing to consider is space heating and water heating. So in my mind, if we could improve our current systems and reduce our energy usage, that would mean that we reduce our demand as well, which means solar and wind would therefore cost less. I met with a man named Todd today. He was a wonderful man. He is from the Noble Conservation Solutions. And so after this meeting, if you're interested, he actually gave me some papers of example of LED lighting and how much that saved in terms of energy usage. But before I go geeking out about this, I'm going to pass on the torch to my friends, Maddie and Zoe. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Do you know who wants to go first or go together? Your choice. It's going to be Zoe.
Hello, everybody. I'm Zoe Frank. I'm a freshman at St. Louis Park High School and also part of the Roots and Shoots Environmental Club, and I'm going to be talking about wind energy. First of all, wind energy is highly effective and a lot more efficient than natural gas energy, which we are currently using. Well, natural gas is 32% to 38% effective. Wind energy is 30% to 45% effective, so that is a significant amount more. And one company we can pair with to actually start using wind energy within our community is Windsource by XL, which is where you pay $1 per month for 100 kilowatt-hour blockage, which is enough to power a fridge and freezer for one month. To sign up for Windsource, you don't need any extra installation or you don't need to have any contract. And it also works with schools such as we've seen at St. Olaf's, and nearly all of their energy is wind-powered. You can also choose how much of your energy is fueled by wind, so the choice is really up to you. And wind energy in general has little price variation in between like 2 to 6 cents per kilowatt hour. It's abundant, inexhaustible, and clean, the biggest renewable energy source in the United States with demand growing. And wind turbines don't produce atmospheric emissions, so that is always a positive thing. So thank you. I will pass on the mic to Maddie now.
Thank you, Zoe. Thanks, Maddie.
Hi, I'm Maddie Lind. I am a sophomore here at St. Louis Park High School, and I am here to talk about different solar energy options. Taking advantage of solar power in the St. Louis Park School District may drastically decrease energy bills in the long run, may increase our overall energy efficiency, and may provide educational opportunities as we try to help our students lead healthier and more sustainable lives. There are a number of solar energy options available for use in the school district. The first being that we could purchase solar panels directly. A few of the pros of this are that we could immediately take advantage of federal, state, and local tax credits when available, and the process of installation could be faster as opposed to working with a third party, which could have their own stipulations and different processes that they like to go through. But a few of the drawbacks could be a larger upfront cost, and we would be immediately responsible for inspection and maintenance costs. A second option could be to lease solar panels. With leasing solar panels, there's often little-to-know upfront costs, and there are two different kinds. The first being an operating lease, where we would pay a monthly payment, but we would not have to pay costs associated with operation or maintenance of solar panels. The second would be a capital lease, where you may have to pay some operation and maintenance costs, and will have to pay a monthly payment to a third party, but we may be able to take advantage of tax credits, and many programs do offer the option to purchase the solar panels after a given amount of time. The third option would be to enter a solar power purchase agreement, which is an agreement to purchase solar power for a set amount of time from a third party, who will then arrange and pay for installation of panels on or near school grounds. There are no upfront capital costs as you're purchasing the power, but not the panels themselves. There are no operation or maintenance costs. You could either pay over time or you could pay a larger chunk of the fees upfront. They can offer a buffer to energy prices, which would be affected by inflation, and they are not considered as a debt or a liability on the district's balance sheet.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wanted to address open forum?
Hi, Katie again, and I'm also going to talk about some more specifics with solar panels. So we recently, within Roots and Shoots, have been working with a company called Ideal Energies, looking at a program called the Solar Rewards Program. And through the Solar Rewards Program, SLP schools would work with Ideal Energies to install solar panels. I have some sheets that I'm going to pass out to everyone in a minute, but all... A man named Tyler Scott, who is the Business Development Manager at Ideal Energies, we've met with him a couple times, and we have also presented this idea to Mr. Bravo, and we've worked with Mr. Osai, and we continue to talk about renewable energy options with them. But with this program, solar panels would be options for pretty much all of the district buildings, except for maybe Lenox. Still looking at it. But with the Solar Rewards Program, the SLP schools would lease the panels from Ideal Energies for 12 years with no money down. And they're even willing to accommodate the construction of new roofs. What would happen was that they'd extend the warrant... Or the lease for one year, and they'd install and... They'd reinstall and take off the panels for free. These lease payments would be 80% of the projected electricity cost savings. And we... And I want you to know, as Roots and Shoots members, we will follow through with this, and we will continue to inquire about renewable energy solutions, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate hearing from all of you. If there's anyone else in the community... Okay. So you are always welcome to stay for the rest of the school board meeting. If you have other things that you need to do tonight, we accept that and are so glad that you did come out and speak at open forum. Thank you very much. In just a moment, we'll hear from Superintendent Aston Osai with his report. In just a moment, we'll hear from Superintendent Aston Osai with his report. All right. We are going to now hear from Superintendent Osai with his report.
All right. Good evening, Chair Waters, members of the board. As, for my superintendent's report tonight, I would like to focus on our mission, specifically two components of our mission, on one of them being that, um, we will ensure all students attain their highest level of achievement, and that we will, um, that we have our desire to provide students multiple pathways to excellence, excellence, excuse me. So for the first part, and thinking about really helping our students, um, ensure their highest, or attain their highest level of achievement, a key component in doing that is having exceptional staff members. And, um, for the purpose of my presentation tonight, I would just like to highlight Catherine Oberg, a fifth grade teacher at Peter Hobart Elementary. Um, she's been named one of forty-three semifinalists, um, for the two thousand eighteen Minnesota Teacher of the Year Award. Catherine was selected as, um, one of forty-three from a list of a hundred and sixty-seven candidates. So later on in March, um, the ten finalists will be named, um, and then following that in May, um, they will select the next two thousand eighteen Minnesota Teacher of the Year. So I would just like to congratulate Catherine, but thank all of our educators here in Saint Louis Park, because without them, our students would not have an opportunity to attain their highest level of achievement. Um, the next piece that I would like to just briefly talk about, um, is one of the many ways that our staff and our students continue to, um, access, and our staff providing multiple pathways to excellence. Um, this past Friday, um, our high school's concert choir, and are under the direction of John Miskowski, um, performed at the Minnesota Music Educators Association Midwinter Clinic at the Minneapolis Convention Center. And this, among many other examples, is just a powerful way to demonstrate how our students are, um, accessing multiple pathways to excellence. I would also like to, um, acknowledge and highlight, um, our students at Aquila Elementary, who will be, um, you know, providing or have been provided a multiple pathway through excellence, and they'll be performing Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory this weekend. Um, there'll be two performances, one on Friday, March second, and, um, Saturday, March third. Both performances will start at, um, seven thirty, and I would be remiss if I did not mention the performance of Tut Tut that occurred last week, um, at Park Spanish Immersion, but because of the, um, heavy snow that we received on Saturday, um, the, the second performance was canceled, but they'll be rescheduling that, uh, for this upcoming weekend on Friday. So my, I have my weekend calendar booked. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be at Tut Tut on Friday, and I'll be at Willy Wonka on Saturday. And what I'm hearing about, um, is that last year, I think, um, it was, I can't remember what it was at Aquila, Lion King, but I heard the line was long, so if any of you are planning on attending, make sure you get there early. So, um, and that concludes my presentation for this evening.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Osai. Um, the next item on our agenda is an update with the Primary Years, Middle Years, and Diploma Program from IB with Jenny Magdal, Sherry Runkey Jones, Carrie Runkey Jones, Ilse Exena, Olivia Tolzine, and Mia Waldera. Thank you so much.
One moment, please. Thank you. What? No, I think. New computer. Woo-hoo. Excellent. Good evening. Uh, my name is Jenny Magdal, and I'm the IB Diploma Coordinator, Diploma Program Coordinator here at the high school, and we would like to thank you for inviting all of the district IB coordinators here tonight. Uh, we're grateful to speak to you all about how the Saint Louis Park and IB mission statements very much mirror one another and support one another, and how IB supports each and every student in our buildings, and inform you about an exciting opportunity at the high school that we have to partner with the International Baccalaureate Organization. This slide just reiterates what we, uh, spoke about last year. The IB programs in Saint Louis Park benefit every one of our students, and because it is embedded across the curriculum from the Primary Years Program through Middle Years and into the Diploma Program, um, many of our students see the benefits, and it supports our racial equity work.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Runkey Jones, and I'm the PYP Coordinator for Peter Hobart. As coordinators, we represent the continuum of the, of the International Baccalaureate Programs. We collaborated to define our purpose, identifying the intersection of IB that it has with the district's strategic plan, mission, and our work in racial equity. As you look at this slide, I'm going to highlight the intersection of Saint Louis Park's mission and that of the International Baccalaureate Program. Caring. Providing a safe and nurturing environment. Respect. Contributing to society. Young people who help to create a better and more peaceful world. Lifelong learners. Rigorous assessment challenging programs. Highest level of achievement. Intercultural understanding. Respect. Understanding that others with their differences may also be right. A safe and nurturing environment that energizes, enhances the spirit. Strategy Two focuses on the systems and structures we have in place to support all employees to educate our learners. Over the last few years at Peter Hobart, we have been exploring the intersection of international mindedness and our work in racial equity in our professional development. The intersection can best be described with the International Baccalaureate's mission statement, which reads, "The International Baccalaureate aims to develop inquiring, knowledgeable, knowledgeable, and caring young people who help to create a better and more peaceful world through intercultural understanding and respect." To achieve this end, the staff at Peter Hobart have, uh, applied their professional learning in racial equity and intercultural understanding by teaching a series of K-five racial identity lessons. In the primary years, primary grades, the learning starts with race as skin color. As you can see by the examples, students have been reading books, um, from different racial perspectives, creating self-portraits, and writing about their identity in the units of inquiry, who we are and how we organize ourselves. In the intermediate grades, the exploration of the intercultural understanding has focused on race as culture and the influence it has on identity. Students have researched the connection between race and culture, identifying windows, times when they see another person's cultural, culture, and mirrors, times when they see their own culture in their reading and discussions. The fourth graders apply their understanding by creating artwork that represented their racial, cultural identities in the unit of inquiry, how we express ourselves. As you can see, the work speaks to the core value of embracing individual differences to enrich a community.
Good evening. My name is Ilse Exena. I am the PYP Coordinator at Susan Lindgren Elementary School, and I'd like to thank you also for having us here. We're happy that you're willing to listen to us as we share the connections that we see between the International Baccalaureate and our school district's, uh, mission and core values. In the last slide, Carrie mentioned Strategy Two, Structures and Systems, and I'll be talking about Strategy One, Teaching and Learning. And my story isn't necessarily specific to our site, but specific maybe to the PYP programs. This school year, all three PYP schools are undergoing an IB evaluation. The evaluation for all programs is five years in length. It's a five-year cycle, which culminates with a team of external experts who come and visit the sites, and they review the results of our self-study, and they help us, when they come to visit, shine a light on the work that we're doing. They are checking us to make sure that we are living up to the high standards and practices of the IB, and that we're ensuring fidelity to the program. Being in a PYP school means that teachers work together collaboratively to match state standards to our given curriculum. We put it all together in a way that is rigorous, relevant, and most of all, promotes deeper learning. Things are not taught in isolation in PYP schools, so we don't have, you know, science at one time, and then social studies at another time, and then reading at another time. The role of the teacher in the PYP program is to identify key understandings for the learner and bridge many curricular areas under six transdisciplinary themes, two of which Carrie just mentioned. Because of this transdisciplinary nature, students are able to make connections across content areas, and their learning is inquiry-based, purposeful, and long-lasting. Teachers don't just work on academics. They work with students to develop strong classroom communities, and within each student, develop a strong sense of self through the learner profile. The combination of academic and social learning sets the students up for success. As you can see from the, from the graphic there, the evaluation cycle is five years in length. That means we are systematically reflecting on and evaluating our practices on a regular basis. Teachers meet to ensure that our written curriculum is transdisciplinary, fosters student inquiry, and inspires action, some of which you saw this evening with the, with the youngster speaking today. Over time, sometimes changes occur in state standard language, or in our district's choices in curriculum, or, um, program choices, and teachers must make decisions to keep things relevant and real for their students, and they do that continually through, through the IB work that's going on. This embedded reflective quality ensures rigorous academic learning, and this is another reason we think that I, the IB framework helps us meet our district's core values, particularly, high-quality education creates opportunities throughout an individual's life.
Picture looks a little familiar. My name is Olivia Tolzine, and I have the privilege to be the IB Coordinator over at Aquila Elementary. And I'm here to share with you about the connections between Strategy Three and, um, and the IB program. Um, I, as our mission states, the SLP is a caring, diverse community with a tradition of putting its children first. Uh, to reach this end, we know the importance of building strong relationships with our students in our community. As a staff at Aquila and throughout all of Saint Louis Park, we have increased our understanding of racial equity, and we realize that the academic learning is enhanced immensely through building these positive relationships. The International Baccalaureate Program also recognizes the importance of building strong relationships, and specifically asks us to make connections with, within our local community to support our students. IB states in our standards that we must utilize resources and the expertise of our community to enhance the learning within our program. The IB asks us that every five to six weeks, we reflect on how we have utilized the, uh, our community to facilitate inquiry and enhance our student learning. The IB standards and Community Collaboration Section of our strategic plan have very strong connections. The International Baccalaureate and Aquila staff believe learning about and through the arts is fundamental to the development of the whole child by promoting creativity, critical thinking, problem-solving skills, and social interactions. We have collaborated with our community to be able to create this experience of theater arts for students at Aquila. The Saint Louis Park Schools Foundation has awarded us a grant to be able to make this happen. Our PTO has set aside funds to support our work. In addition, parent volunteers come in every week to help us with music and choreography. We have students from the middle school and high school come back and volunteer their time every week. Um, this year, we have one hundred and ten students in second through fifth grade creating the show Willy Wonka. And this opportunity has been made available to them without any financial barriers through the partnerships from our community. It is here that the marriage of the IB philosophies, our mission of enhancing the spirit of our children, and the district core values are married together. And we do hope that we see you, um, at Aquila this weekend, um, Friday and Saturday, like Mr. Osai said. The show starts at seven, so, um, please, please join us. Um, and there are no tickets to the show. We just offer, uh, ask for goodwill donations. We want as many people to come that's possible.
Good evening. I'm Mia Waldera, and I'm the International Baccalaureate Coordinator at Saint Louis Park Middle School. Um, the middle school is the largest IB world school in our district, serving over, well over a hundred staff and a thousand, excuse me, a thousand students. I'll be addressing the intersection between IB, Strategy Four, our facilities, as well as the core value of lifelong learning. The Middle Years Program, or MYP as it's known, is the program designed for students in grades six through ten. In an IB MYP school, the arts is considered as core a part of the IB program as the other seven subject areas. The IB MYP offers a very rich liberal arts program. Students are expected to take a minimum of fifty hours of arts every year of the program, and they must show they have experienced both the visual and the performing arts. To align with the IB expectation of a rich arts program and respond to our community's interests, the middle school offers eleven of its thirty-two elective courses focusing on the arts, both performing and visual. This is more than a third of our elective options. These options allow our students to take multiple arts classes each year of the program. For example, kids can take both band and orchestra. They can take musical theater and digital photography. So there is both quantity and quality in the arts courses offered to our students. Our course offerings are growing and respond to the demand. For instance, musical theater recently went from one section to two, and the slide reveals that the eleven different elective courses in the arts have forty-six different sections, which enroll over twelve hundred students. All of this shows that the middle school with its IB framework is living up to the Saint Louis Park mission of providing a safe and nurturing environment that truly energizes the spirit of our students. We know that our community also values our facility offering a breadth and depth of the arts, because in a recent referendum, the community overwhelmingly supported adding a performing arts center at our middle school. There's already a team working on the details with architects about the decisions related to this space. We want to truly thank our community for this wonderful space in order to continue to develop and grow the arts program in our current facilities. Our facilities also work in collaboration- Our facilities also work in collaboration with community experts. Mr. Jerry Wilson here is pictured on the left. At a school board spotlight a couple of years ago, he works with the middle school in hosting a short story writing contest. Mr. Wilson is an author of five books, a writer of three plays, serves on a number of boards, is a St. Louis Park community member, and a father of a student in our high school. He promotes writing in our schools, and the middle school has an anthology of short stories published because of his collaboration with us. We're very excited about the book. Now, connecting our facilities to community experts and lifelong learning. Mr. Jerry Wilson has now collaborated with Twin Cities Film Fest to take our students' published short stories and convert them into screenplays. He'll be working with screenwriters from the Minneapolis Community and Technical College, and then those screenplays will come to life in film with actors from the University of Minnesota Theater and Arts Dance Program. The October Film Fest, this 2018 October, hosted by Twin Cities Film Fest, will take place at the Icon Theater at West End, showcasing our students' short stories. This is the Twin Cities Film Fest maiden voyage in collaborating with the middle school, but they are eager to continue that collaboration and grow it. So I'd like you to imagine a day in the very near future, inaugurating the new Performing Arts Center at the middle school by showing the middle school students' films. Our hopes and dreams are coming true. Thank you.
The skills that the students learn in their PYP and MYP help them greatly as they get to their 11th and 12th grade years of high school in the diploma program. And they work towards getting the core value of high expectations, challenge everyone to higher levels of achievement. Like to talk a little bit about a great opportunity that we have called the IB Excellence and Equity Initiative, and what that is. It's called E2 for short. It's a program started by the International Baccalaureate in conjunction with a grant for the US, from the US government to identify within United States schools, barriers within their schools for students to attempt and achieve the IB diploma, specifically the students of color. And with those schools, breaking down those barriers that are identified. It's all based upon a Chicago study with the Chicago Public Schools that identified potential factors to student post-secondary success. And what they did was they designed an experiment that led to an apples-to-apples comparison that ruled out all factors for success, leaving the only difference being whether the student was an IB diploma candidate or not. The research contends that the results show causation, not just correlation, which we know most educational research does, between student participation in the IB diploma program and post-secondary success, shown in the graph there. They found that 77.2% of diploma candidates, whether they earned the diploma or not, compared to just 53.3% of non-IB group, attended a four-year college. The high school is, has this really exciting opportunity to be partnering with the International Baccalaureate and the E2 Initiative, as we are one of 49 schools in the US to be accepted into the program. We will participate in online trainings with the International Baccalaureate that are specifically geared towards equity. We are going to form a team within the school, nine, 12, not just, not just the 11, 12th grade staff, but we know that the benefits of the PYP and MYP that our students are coming with needs to be tapped, and we need to start working with all nine, 12 teachers to identify how we can work on the approaches to teaching and learning and give our students the skills that they need to be successful within their 11th and 12th grade diploma programs. So we're going to be working in those teams of not just teachers, but also our library media center specialist, and our equity coaches, and a whole, a whole, a group from the staff to support this effort. We're going to identify the barriers that our systems have put in place over two decades of, over two decades of working on the International Baccalaureate, and we're going to start breaking those barriers down. We're excited as a school to have a diploma program that completely mirrors the student population within the school sometime in the near future.
So all of us would just like to thank each of you for your time and your continued to support of the IB programs within our school. And we are welcoming any questions or comments that you have for us.
I don't know if this is a question or comment. It's more of just a comment and what I've taken from your presentation and what I've done in equity. It, it's, it pairs very well. It seems more like the IB is, is kind of a equity for the kids as we're still training equity with our teachers. So this is a great program.
Couldn't agree with you more, Ken, Mr. Morrison.
Olivia, do you mind, just for people out in the community who might not truly understand all the nuances of transdisciplinary? Because I remember doing tours for prospective parents at Susan Lindgren, and there was a big bulletin board that explained, you know, K-5, the different categories. But then how does that translate in a concrete way? How do you marry social studies, science, the arts, or a language arts component? And, and you're very thoughtful with how you bring all those pieces together. And I know you all know how to do it, but is there an easy way to maybe give an example to the community?
Sure. I can, I can do my best. So transdisciplinary learning is, again, it's just taking all the disciplines, reading, writing, math, science, social studies, and putting them together. And the inquiry that we do is through big ideas. So, let's see. If we are thinking about a first-grade standard of life cycles, let's say, the big idea that we want the kids to understand is cycles, and that there are lots of cycles within our world. There's water cycles, there's rock cycles, there's cycles for animals and plants. And so just big, taking that big idea is what is a cycle? But then you can apply that word of cycle to different stories. How do stories begin? What's the middle? What's the end? And certain, certain stories like fairy tales kind of go in a cycle. You introduce with once upon a time, there's some sort of conflict between people within the story, and then there's some sort of resolution at the end. And so just, I'm thinking about first-grade standard. So you want to take all of that big ideas and apply it into the different disciplines. Does anyone have something else that they'd like to add to that? I guess I would also like to add that we all have something called approaches to learning. And those approaches to learning are the skills that students need to be able to make those cross-disciplinary connections. And so, yes, there's reading skills, but it looks like comprehension, analysis, analytical thinking. There's, there's lots of different skills that we must teach our kids so that can be applied, cross-disciplines, into this big idea.
Well, a quick connection to the middle years program. So transdisciplinary in the middle years are key concepts. So that word "cycle" would be a key concept embedded in a unit, depending on what subject area. So we could have math studying cycles, science studying cycles, music. So it builds a little differently in the middle years, but it's the same idea, but it goes much more in-depth on subject-specific.
So, similar, except that once you get into 11th and 12th grade, it's very content-based. My syllabus for chemistry is one of the biggest ones that they have, and there's a lot of standards that we're making sure that our students have. But between all of that are those approaches to teaching and learning skills that the students are getting, and also things like theory of knowledge. So not just a standalone class that we have a theory of knowledge, but all of our IB classes are trying to get our students to think more deeply and understand how they know the things that they know, and how they can explain that to other people. So we have similar things, we just give it different words in the diploma program.
Excuse me. I, I just had two, many thoughts as I was listening to you, but two that I'll share. One, one Mia, I, I hope we get some updates on when the students' shows are going to be at the Icon. And that, and that you're on the facilities committee, whatever it is, so that you, so that we have a drop-down screen at the new auditorium when it opens up at the middle school, so we can actually have that showing.
Yes.
And then, Jenny, I was really excited to hear about the work you're doing ninth and 10th grade across all, well, ninth through 12th, but to try to prepare all of our students to be excited and believe that they can do the IB curriculum when they get into the, into 10th, 11th and 12th grade. And when you talk about the diploma program, are you also saying that students can take a class or two or three, but they don't have to do the whole program, which happens now, but we just want to get more students doing that?
Yes, absolutely. The research from Chicago was specifically looking at diploma candidates. However, there, there is so much research out there showing that just participating within IB classes, whether it's the full diploma or not, they're going to benefit from, from the groupings that we have in the, the collaboration.
Just from a personal standpoint, so my oldest kid was a sixth grader when PYP came. And by the time he got through 12th grade, he took both AP and IB classes, but he didn't do the diploma. But what he said was, the IB classes especially prepared him for college. He really felt ready for college-level writing and analysis. And kid's going to graduate from college in four years. So, thank you, all of you, for, and I got three more to go, so. This is really helpful.
Excellent. Thank you.
I had the opportunity to sit down on the IB evaluations for two of our PYP schools a couple of weeks ago. And I was struck when you were going through the, the IB mission and our mission and the, the sort of coordination between the two. And I think that we were really sort of gratified to hear how that came through in the evaluation, that the evaluators understood that our core values very much matched up with theirs, and that they felt like our teachers understood that as well. And I was super excited to hear that. So I have a question, which is sort of long-term, sort of around what Ken was asking or was saying. And that is, kind of at an educator level, how do the IB coordinator positions work with the racial equity coaches to sort of dovetail those two pieces of our mission?
So Anne, you're asking the collaboration process between IB coordinators and our equity coaches? So at Peter Hobart, I collaborate with Cam Moata. And what we do is we actually meet every week. And we may be meeting with Principal Schweetering to talk about things that are going on in the building. There, we're also meeting to plan our professional development. So we provide professional development, not only for all of the teachers, but for the last two years, we've also been providing professional development for our paraprofessionals and instructional assistants. So we use our school improvement plan to guide our work, and he and I are collaborating at times about what's going on in our professional learning communities, our PLCs. We may be collaborating also on the curriculum instruction that we're providing. So that collaboration is ongoing, it's intentional, and it's interwoven through all the things that are happening.
Anne, do you want to hear from each of the? I would say her story is-
It's pretty much the same.
Yes, it's, yes, we meet regularly, we plan the professional development, we reflect on our teachers' progress, and we make sure that as we're coaching teachers and our curriculum, that we're working together as closely as possible.
Kind of sounds transdisciplinary, doesn't it?
It does, yes.
We really appreciate you spending all this time with us. Thank you for all of the hard work, and thank you again. We appreciate it. The next item on our agenda is the high school baseball team will be traveling to Arizona for spring break, and Director of Athletics, Andy Ewald, will be explaining that to us. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Andy Ewald, District Athletic Director, and I'm here seeking approval for 20 student athletes to go on a five-day, four-night baseball trip over spring break. I believe in your board packet, there's an itinerary of that trip. It's pretty detailed, put together by our coaches. The Minnesota State High School League expects any high school program that's going out of state for practice travel to get board approval, so thus I'm here. So I guess I would leave it up to any questions any of you might have about this particular trip. I think Coach Brian Kelly laid out pretty clearly the itinerary. The cost was kept down. Students were given multiple opportunities to do fundraising for the trip. I know of at least one student athlete who used fundraised dollars to cover the entire trip, so it's not costing his family or himself anything. So I'm here for questions.
Is this the second or third time that they've done this, Andy?
This is the second time.
Yeah, Andy, can you just tell me how the students are selected that get to go, and whether we have diversity in our student selections this year?
Yep. I'll answer the second question first. Yes, there is diversity in the 20 students that are going. The way the kids are selected is it's any senior who has been part of the program, regardless if they were on varsity last year or not. They have first crack at it, and then after that, they fill it in based on, with juniors on down, anybody who probably was a varsity player or potentially a varsity player. And then if there's questions about character or anything like that, that might be something that might eliminate a kid from going. But I don't know of any of those that have, I don't think that was a criteria that was used this year, but it, it's something that they kind of hold as, if we have to make a decision, because they're only able to take 20 kids. But yes, there is diversity, and they go from upperclassmen regardless of ability on down. Yep. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Andy.
Yep.
All right. The next item on our agenda is policy development. First reading, Policy 101, Legal Status of the School Board, 108, District Goals, 413, Harassment and Violence, and new Policy 415, Mandated Reporting of Maltreatment of Vulnerable Adults. So we've been reviewing these. They were in our packet. And Cindy, is there anything else we should be aware of with, with these policies?
I believe on 413, there were some new additions that were offered from administration. No, I'm sorry. Let's see. Anything in red that can, is, is on there from MSBA. If there's anything in blue, it's from administration. And I might be speaking about the wrong 413. That might be coming up in the second reading for policies. But these are all being requested to be reviewed by the board. 415 is new to the district. It is not new to MSBA. It is just one that we do not have, that we are strongly encouraged to have with our 400 series.
Mary?
I, on the, Policy 413, Harassment and Violence, I would like us to remove the word "including" in every instance where it is in between sexual orientation and gender identity. That's in several places. I know that that tracks the language of the Minnesota Human Rights Act, but I do not like the implication that gender identity and expression is related to sexual orientation. Those are two very distinct classifications or means of identification, and I think they should be separate. And I think if you eliminate "including" in all of those instances, it doesn't actually change the intent or meaning of the provision at all.
I agree. And we'd have to change, let's see, D, number six, where it has the definition of sexual orientation, and it had to be, I think, six and seven. So number six would be sexual orientation, and then, and then we'd have to separate out the part of that that would be gender expression or- the part of that that would be gender expression or identity.
So my recollection on that from last year, and maybe I'm thinking about a different policy, but I think it was this one in the same wording, is that we were in agreement with that. However, it was the state that was using that terminology in that order. Rick's giving me a nod here, and so we ended up going towards that. But we had the same issue with it when we looked at it last year, I believe. Do, can you elaborate, Rick?
Yeah. As Board Member Tombeck said, that, it, that mirrors the definition of the Minnesota Human Rights Act, whereas they lay out their definitions of protected class under the Minnesota Human Rights Act. It says, "sexual orientation, comma, including gender identity." And so this policy, as it was recommended by the district's council, just simply mirrored that. That's, I think, why the drafting was the same.
That's correct. This also, this phrase is, I believe, in 102, Educational Opportunity, I believe that is. And this, I believe there was discussion among the board last, when Rob was here, and then again, just a few months ago. And I was asked to check with legal counsel, and that is the affirmation that we did get from legal counsel, and Superintendent Osai has, is aware of that as well. So understanding that Director Tombeck's request and Director Casey, it's the board's will to do what you feel is necessary to have a consistent and policy that you can support, but that change was recommended by counsel.
Any other discussion or input about this?
I'll just add that I understand why counsel did it that way. Again, it does track the language of the act, and I get that. But if you look at us eliminating "including" does not change the intent of the language at all, it doesn't expand or limit the rights. It just actually shows that we, as a district, understand that there is a distinction between sexual orientation and gender identity and expression. And I think that a lot of the commentary on the law recognizes that it improperly linked them together. And I would just, I would strongly encourage us to eliminate "including," so that we are demonstrating that we understand the distinction.
So if we, oh, Nancy?
So is this the first read on this policy? So that we could, when it comes back to us, see it? I'd like to see it both ways, with the changes being recommended by Mary and Anne, and as it's been the statutory language. And then I'd like to know if the statute mandates that we adopt that language or not. I mean, that's what I want to know. Because if it's not a mandatory ad op, if we don't have to, if we're not mandated to adopt the exact language of the statute, and some statutes say that, you have to do this. I want to know if this, if we're mandated to adopt it, or if we have this kind of flexibility consistent with the law is. If we do, that's going to influence my call on this.
I asked that question earlier, and I was told that it was not mandated.
It's not mandated?
No.
Did you have anything to add, Rick?
Yeah, I was going to say, no, I mean, it's not mandated, and as Cindy Bennett had said, the board is free to create policy, and the board could adopt that change. I did want to make one other comment, that you'll see a whole bunch of red on these policies, or coming from district administrative recommendations. And as we looked at these with a closer critical eye, there's nine different policies that say, something happens and someone's wronged, and then you report that, and then you, we investigate, and we do something. Those nine policies are 102, the EEO policy, this 413, harassment, 423, student-employee relations, 435, staff ethics and standards, 514, bullying prohibition, 521, student disability, non-disability, nondiscrimination, 522, student sex, nondiscrimination, which we're talking about here, 526, hazing, 528, student-family marital status, nondiscrimination. Our, our hope is to make them a little more consistent, because as you read through them, the, what we do varies based on when it was drafted. So you're going to see us, as we bring these procedures forward, trying to get some more consistency around, who's the human rights officer, who's the 504 administrator, who's the Title IX administrator for purposes of these policies? And then, to whom do you report, how do we do it, how, you know, who's, and then, and lay out those procedures. So hopefully, by the time we're done with these nine policies, they'll, they'll look like they come from the same organization.
Nancy?
I really like that, thank you. And I also like the changes that have been suggested by Anne and Mary, and we look forward to seeing those. And I like the fact that you've, that you're, you're identifying a position for various reporting and not the name of the person that currently holds that position. I think that's a much better policy approach, so thank you for making those changes.
And, and once we do that, we will also then conspicuously post the, you know, the title, plus who that is, and where you reach them, and, and get that so that's clearer also.
Separate, separate from the policy, though, right?
Correct. The policy will just state that we will conspicuously post, you know, and then, then the, the actual posting will be just an administrative action that's done every year to make sure that the right names are in the right spots.
Rick, can I ask, what does conspicuously mean in this case? Where are these going to be posted?
Right. We have them posted in, in, you know, in every main office of, of all the schools and build, like Lenox and others. We're also going to build out our website, so it's clearer, you know, if you feel there's a violation of board policy, you know, how to report, who to report to, and so we'll have that on the website as well.
Any other questions? Jim?
Maybe I just have a comment. I think this is coming back to me now. I think I objected to this language when we adopted it last time around, and I think I was told that maybe we should just adopt the MSBA language back then, just to cover ourselves legally, and that we could fine-tune it in the future. So now, maybe it is time to fine-tune it, and I would go for the new language.
That is correct, Jim. That exactly, that is exactly how this happened and why it happened, and that's why the, the advice from counsel came the way it did, hoping that in the future, there would be the gender inclusion policy, when we were ready to accept that, and they were waiting for law to guide us, and that has not happened. So you are exactly right, that's exactly how we got here.
Any other discussion? Okay, so what I heard Nancy and Mary both indicate, we'd, we'd like to see the policy both ways. One, recommended by counsel, and one, recommended removing the word "including," and then we'll have a final discussion about it before we approve it at our second reading.
That's what I heard too. I'll bring them in two different colors, so it'll be easier to distinguish.
And then changing that, that definition under-
The definition, who's, who's going to give me the definition?
I, I can send you some sample language to split that up.
And then bring, bring that back as a second reading for review for the full board. Thank you.
All right, so is there anything else on those first readings? Okay, now we're going to go into policy development, second reading, 410, Family Medical Leave, and 522, Student Sex Nondiscrimination. And Cindy, we did, I think, have some tweaks that we're going to take a final look at before we adopt in the action agenda.
Yep, I can, if, Mr. Crier made several edits on 522, it might be helpful if he spoke to 522 when you're ready.
I just had to find the little button here. Yeah, again, just as I mentioned earlier, 522, we did two things here. One is, just like in 413, the, the policies are, are written in more of a thou shall not, you know, so if you do this, things will happen. We did try to infuse some of the mission and core values, so that the purpose of the policy is to help create a safe and nurturing environment that energizes the spirits of students, and then ensures students are protected from discrimination. So a little bit of an aspirational goal tied to our mission and core values. And then, when you get to the, the C, I think it is, we named the Director of Special Services as the Title IX Coordinator for the purposes of this policy. Andy Ewald would be the Athletic Director, as it was former, formerly in the policy, is the Title IX Administrator for Sport or Athletics. But for the purposes of this policy, Tammy Reynolds, our Director of Student Services, would be the district's designated Title IX Coordinator. And then on the, in the procedures, when we talk about, as, like I said, mirroring the 413 language, Tammy Reynolds would be the Human Rights Officer designated in the, in the case of student-to-student type interactions, and I, as the HR Director, would be the Human Rights Officer designated in the, whenever an employee is implicated, so.
And, and those changes are clearly highlighted in various colors. Any other questions that people have? Because this will be on the action agenda in a few minutes. All right, hearing none. Let's move on to the budget assumptions discussion with Superintendent Osai.
Good evening, Chair Waters, members of the board. Last, last meeting, we heard from members of the Financial Advisory Committee, and there were three budget recommendations that they made. And this evening, I would like to make a recommendation that the school board approves or accepts those budget recommendations. One was that we set the per-student funding for FY19 at a 2% increase to the General Education Formula allowance, as provided by the current biennium state budget. The second one is that we increase special education revenue by $900,000, which is consistent with the most recent actual revenues. And lastly, that we project stable enrollment for FY19 at $5,100 Waddams, with the potential for increased enrollment as facilities come online beginning in FY21.
Very good. Any questions or comments related to that?
I have one question. So, I'm sorry, I wasn't here last time. But the statement, the third one of the 2019, $5,100 Waddams, is that 1920 would be $51 Waddams?
Yes, that would be for the 1920 school year.
Okay.
Anyone else? Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a maker of the motion to approve that as it is in your packet? Moved by Nancy, second?
Second.
Second by Ken. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? That carries 7-0. All right. The next item is our action agenda. Approval of Policy Second Reading, 410, Family Medical Leave, and 522, Student Sex Nondiscrimination. It is recommended that the school board approve the second readings of Policies 410, Family Medical Leave, and 522, Student Sex Nondiscrimination, as presented. Is there a motion for that? Moved by Nancy, second. Second by Anne. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? That carries 7-0. The next item is approval of the high school baseball Arizona Spring 2018 trip. It is recommended that the school board approve the high school baseball trip to Arizona as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Ken. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim Baniki. Any discussion? Okay.
I think it's a great opportunity for the teams to go and play against other people that they won't normally get to play against, and a great opportunity, that they're doing fundraising, so more people can go.
Very good. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? That carries 7-0. Next item, approval of the fiscal '18 budget assumptions. It is recommended that the school board approve the fiscal '18 budget assumptions as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Anne, seconded by Ken. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, that carries 7-0. Now we are at Communications and Transmittles.
I have a couple of things.
All right, thanks, Ken.
I have a couple. In addition to all of the performances that we've talked about, I have it on my calendar that Cinderella is the high school choir performance that's going to happen this weekend here at the high school. Anybody else able to confirm that for me? Karen's working on it.
Yes, the high school gala fundraising performance starts Thursday, 7:00 PM in the auditorium, Friday, 7:00 PM, March 2nd in the auditorium, Saturday in the auditorium, 7:00 PM, and Sunday in the auditorium, 2:00 PM. And you're right, it is Cinderella. So, and that is their big fundraising. I wish John were here to talk about what they do with that money, but the thing that is really, really exceptional with our district is that our choir, theater arts, band, and orchestra teachers, both at the middle school and the high school, they work together in collaboration. They don't have cutthroat competition, where you can't have that student, he or she is mine. They work together so that there is a place for every student in our system to experience the performing arts in a way that's meaningful to them. And, and that is an exception. Not every school, not every school system is like that, and, and we are really needing to continue to nurture that.
I've got one more, and this is, this is one that's much harder to talk about, but that's the, you know, this is our first meeting since the shooting in Parkland, Florida, at the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. And there's lots that we could say about that. For our purposes, I would say that we have a lot of work to do, that it's a broader issue, it's about, it's a gun violence issue, it's a counseling issue, it's a mental health issue, it's a how do we treat each other issue, it's how do we get rid of the partisan divides and really find some common sense solutions on a problem that is just, that we need to solve. Having said that, I, I want to say that Mary and I were at the Capitol on February 22nd for the Protect Minnesota rally, where two of our high school students spoke. And Mary, you could say whose names they are.
Eva Goldfarb and Anna Dussaire. And they were widely reported in many outlets for their quotes and the comments that they made.
And one of our speakers talked about the March 14th at 10:00 AM, 17-minute walkout or pause in memory of the students that were killed in Florida. That's the one-month anniversary of the date of the shootings, and there were 17 lives lost and innumerable other lives tragically affected by that long haul. And so I just want to say to our students, you are not the only ones pausing on, on March 14th, and I hope that we all, wherever we are, can stand with them for those 17 minutes at 10:00 AM. And then there's another March for Our Lives that's been organized by the Florida students for March 24th, both in DC, and I know there's one here at the Capitol. Whatever way you, works for you to be involved, this is an issue that we need everyone to help us solve, and we are going to do our part. And so I just want to thank everybody for- And so I just want to thank everybody for paying attention to it and staying engaged to see what we can all do.
And to follow up on that, in addition to Eva and Anna, there were several other St. Louis Park students who were present at that rally, and we actually ran into several other members of our community who were there as well. And as a district, I think that we should be incredibly proud of the students who went and lived their values and were risk takers and spoke in front of all of those people and interacted with their legislators to advocate for something that they believe in. And we've got great other examples tonight of our students doing that, and it really is just very, very heartening to see our students doing these things, so.
So, to that note, I hope that all of our administration and teachers can appreciate this time that will be taken of the students if they chose to take action, so. But there was a couple of things that I wanted to talk about. The first one was ACTs, or tomorrow for our juniors, of which they've been prepping and trying to do well in. I have a junior that's going to be taking it, so I'm no of it. And as I was talking to Superintendent Osai, we hope to continue that testing in a few years after the state gives up every student, junior, taking it this year. And the other is children's first breakfast on Thursday. Thank you. Did you want to do that one? Okay, children's first birthday, children's first breakfast is on Thursday fundraiser. It's the only time that Children First does get funding. And so for the year, so we hope to have all tables filled and everyone participate, and they're typically Diana and I amec speakers, and there's our graduate from the high school that will be speaking tomorrow, or Thursday, and I can't remember his name, but my son likes him a lot. He's a soccer player.
His name is Van Jones.
Van Jones. A lot of people know him. So, there it is.
Ken, is it at 7:00 a.m. again at the Doubletree in St. Louis Park?
Thank you. 7:00 a.m., Doubletree, Thursday, the March 1st.
Yeah, I like that, children's first on the first. So earlier in the month, I had the opportunity to attend the National School Boards Association Advocacy Institute in order to actively engage not only our federal elected officials, but our state officials on some key legislation. The biggest one that impacts our budget is our special ed cross subsidy. In St. Louis Park, it's $4.8 million. So there was a delegation from Minnesota attending and meeting, and we are continuing to do follow-up with our federal elected officials, as well as our state people, to fund the unfunded mandates for special ed. So the other thing that came out of that workshop is the implementation of ESAA, Every Student Succeeds Act, and there is a local school board component. We are all going to be receiving a workbook to start working through these questions as it relates to our strategic plan and our world's best workforce plan, so I'm just giving you the heads up, there will be homework in a few weeks. And then, anyone else with communications and transmittals? Cindy?
I'm going to double-check that name that Lisa gave you. I'm not quite sure that's the right name for the children-first speaker, so I'll correct it in the minutes.
Van Hahn?
Van Hahn, I believe it is.
Yeah.
We've been discussing.
Yeah. He's a longtime advocate for children-first after he graduated from our high school, and he played for Chato Alvarado on the boys' team that went to state. And he is still involved with a group of young people who sponsor a soccer tournament every year called the SPAM, S-P-A-M, Football Club, and they provide a scholarship for our awards night to one of our high school students every year. So this is a group of people who came out of our system and still, to this day, contribute to it. So we are really blessed by the kids who come out of our system.
Karen, what's his name again?
Van Hahn. So if there are no further communications and transmittals, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Ken, second. Second by Mary Tombeck. Any discussion? I don't think so. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries 7-0. We are adjourned at 8:39.